And that will show up on, is just recording or is it going to be online?
It's recording now and it's going to be online.
Okay, so you'll let me know when. All set. All right, thank you. And again, welcome to the April 14th Budget Workshop of Lewiston City Council. The first item I have on my agenda is to discuss the school budget. As we know, Ed has furnished the city council with a memo. And I believe that was shared with Superintendent Finn, is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
So Ed, if you have a different suggestion, I think I'm just going to let the superintendent kind of proceed with whatever presentation you'd like to at this point. And then we'll have questions from folks after that. That makes sense.
Sounds fine.
All right, Superintendent Finn, welcome and feel free to present to the city council.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate you having us here this evening. I'm going to go ahead and just share my screen. I've only got four slides. Tonight will be a little bit different than it was a month ago. I'll go ahead and play from start here. Can I just get a thumbs up if folks can see that? Great, thank you. Once again, I want to thank the city council for having us here tonight as part of this workshop. My name is Todd Finn. I'm the Superintendent Lewiston Public Schools. I'd also like to take a moment to introduce Bobby Avery, who is much more than just a right hand in our district. She's the best Chief Financial Officer in the state of Maine, the best that I've seen in my career as an educator. This evening, I'd like to be able to just quickly review what our framework is, review what the goals of this budget are, and review the revised budget that we came up with and spoke about last time, but also to state Lewiston Public Schools' position, given the current dynamics moving forward. Our framework for success, as shared before, looks a lot like this Parthenon. In our previous meeting, just as a review, we discussed what the mission is of Lewiston Public Schools, as well as that eight-word vision. We talked about what the goals are, and we'll repeat those this evening. And for the purpose of tonight's meeting, we really went deeply into what that budget looks like. Of course, that was all supported by data, all supported by a strategic plan, and with all of those coming together to form student, teacher, and community success. And we believe that no matter what task, conditions, or standards that we are presented with, we are still going to reach that pinnacle of student, teacher, and community success. That's our attitude going into this. I'd like to discuss, guess what those goals were, or also known as the budget priority. You recall that we decided that we would like to provide meaningful, intentional, and sustainable professional development. In short, we want to make sure that we continue to get better with the resources we currently have. That we want to address equity in the opportunity gap. That's been a major goal of the city, and we want to mirror that as well. We want to provide inclusive, thoughtful, emotional learning in a multi-tiered system of support that is universal across Lewiston Public Schools. Those were our goals going into this early on, and they remain our goals right now. Of course, if we take a look at, this was shared in our previous meeting, our baseline budget overview, with the additional requests based on priority investments as per our strategic plan. And we'll draw our attention down to that bottom row, our 2020 revised budget, the natural fluctuation in cost drivers, the superintendent's revised requests, and the principals and directors' initial requests, with the 2021 budget being $89,615,862.16 for a 4.08% increase. You recall that the school committee was very proactive as partners in developing this budget by reducing $1.4 million prior to us even presenting this to the city council at our previous meeting. A lot of work went into that, and I highly appreciate the folks in the school committee who helped us out with this. My final slide, hopefully will set the tone for at least the school department this evening. This is Lewiston Public Schools' position moving forward. We all know that we are living and working in unprecedented times. Councilor Clement really summed that up with his comments at the last meeting, and that really resonated with me. We recognize the heavy toll COVID-19 has taken on the city of Lewiston. We see that every day we live here. We know this. We recognize that there is more of that toll to come before things get better, but they will get better. And we will still provide a world-class education for all Lewiston learners. That's our mission. That's what we will do. The school department is prepared to receive guidance from our partners at the city level in terms of next steps in our budget process, given the very unique circumstances that we are all experiencing at this time, and we'll get to work. Understanding and recognizing that the school committee and central services presented this budget with $1.4 million in reductions already made, we are motivated to continue our work with your guidance in mind. And I'm hoping that this evening, we'll get some of that guidance clearly defined for us so we can get to work. We are all in this together. We hear that a lot, but we really mean this as well, and so does the city council. Lewiston Public Schools understands what that means. We will pull our weight. We will do what we need to do. And finally, we are ready. We are ready for your guidance. We are ready for your input. And we are ready to do what we've done this entire year, which is roll up our sleeves and let's come up with something that makes the most sense while still allowing us to do what you know what we're going to do anyways, which is provide a world-class education for our Lewiston learners.
All right, thank you very much, Superintendent Finn. Is there anyone else from your, does Bobby have anything to add, or school committee chair Roy, either one of you have anything to add?
I'm happy to help answer questions as needed.
Okay, good, thank you. So the agenda was supposed to have an update on the coronavirus 19, and we're going to get to that, but I don't want to interrupt the presentation from the school committee. So what I'll do is shift to questions from the council of the superintendent, or Bobby, or Chairwoman Roy. And then, before we switch to city council budget discussions, if we could, we'll have Dennis and Superintendent Finn give us a brief update on the COVID-19. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions of school officials from city councils. Councilor Ray?
Thanks. Are we using the raise hand feature to do this process?
Yeah, that works. That works for me. And for some reason, I don't see it. Just people, please feel free to flash your hands up. I'll catch it.
Great. So Ms. Avery or Mr. Finn, could you tell us what, how much above the state minimum local share the budget that was voted through the school committee is?
Yes, Bobby, would you answer that question for us, please? You got all those numbers in front of you.
I can. So the above the required minimum is $227,478.19. And there are three different components that make that up. There is the ED279, and what that calculation says, that states that Lewiston has to pay. There's the local debt service, and then there's the additional local allocation. So there's three different components that total that $227,478. Out of those three components, one of them is flat. It's had a zero increase, and that is the additional local. So that leaves the other two components, which is the debt service and then the ED279 calculation.
Great, thank you. And this came through unanimously from school committee, right? Okay, thanks.
Yes.
Any other questions from city councils? Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just regarding the city administrator's memo that was sent out a couple of days ago regarding the carryover money and how it's going to be used, what's the school district's response to that? I guess, what are we going to be looking at for this time next year?
Councilor Jensen, that's a fantastic question. And first, we wanted to thank the city administrator for sending that memo out. It allowed us to put our heads together and really drill down to some of these issues. Chief Administrative Officer Avery has got some responses to these questions or comments that were made in that memo. And Bobby, would you please present that to us?
Sure. So, yes, Mr. Barrett, thank you very much for giving us a heads up on this memo and the questions. As part of your question, you had asked about special education. And we are in the hopes of conducting an audit. An audit was done in 2011. At that time, the estimated savings for special education was $1 million. We plan on conducting that audit again, doing a revision of that audit. I estimate that the savings would be at least, and this is 10 years later, at least a million and a half. So the idea is, is that we'll complete that audit, which is necessary because as you look at our Article II, which is special education, every year after year after year, right, we keep adding to that special education budget. At some point, we have to look at that. We have to take a look at that and figure out, we call that the snowball effect. So is that really something that, you know, needs to happen? Are there improvements that we can make? Is there a redesign that we can take a look at? And so that's what that audit is going to tell us, and that's what it told us 10 years ago. So the hope is, is that that will come through, which we believe that it will. That will not be a one-time savings. That will be a year after year after year savings. So we would be able to cut, the hope is, we would be able to cut from our special ed budget without reducing services, still maintaining really great services for our special ed students. And then, year after year, we do typically in Lewiston maintain a fund balance. It is not typically as high as what it was last year. The hope is, though, is that we would continue to maintain, God bless you, we would continue to maintain the fund balance and be able to use some of that along with the savings from our special ed Article II. That's it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from city councils? Who's that?
Sorry. So we're discussing the school budget, and what is the result of this discussion? Is it further direction to the school department and school committee? Or is it for us to just think about and make a decision at a later time? I ask this because in past years, we've kind of gotten into this point in the conversation. We've been on with the school committee. We've been on with the school superintendent. And then, at a later time, when they're not here, started making statements and decisions. And so I just want to understand where we are in the process and what we as councilors should be thinking about right now versus with the school. Do you get what I'm saying?
No, I'll clarify that. So I believe this meeting would be an opportunity for the council to provide some guidance to the department so that hopefully we're not going back and forth for another month or so. I think it's important that we share, you know, our thoughts with them at this point. Did that answer your question, Councilor Ray?
So if folks have additional concerns about how the fund balance is being used, now would be the moment to talk about that.
Oh, absolutely. In fact, I'm not sure I understood. Kathy Montego walked into my office, so I kind of had to divert for a second. But did you actually address the question with the fund balance in your answer, Bobby?
I did. So what the hope is, is that the special education audit that comes back, we would actually have savings as it relates to that. So our budget would go down. Therefore, it would require less fund balance use.
And so what would happen if that doesn't happen, if you don't find the savings in special ed?
Well, then that's a problem. That continues to be a problem. But we believe that we will because that report 10 years ago, with that redesign stated that there was $1 million worth of estimated savings. When you look at, and we got our hands on that report, it's very comprehensive. What's really neat is that they have this, they break it out into different sections, and one happens to be financial. And so it's very comprehensive. I was quite impressed with the work that they did. It's the same company that we would have them do a revision of. I really do believe that we would have at least a million and a half of savings in special ed, if not more.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from councils? Any direction councils would like to share with the schools? Councilor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, in line with the question I asked before, I guess, like if I were still on a school committee today, that would be my biggest concern, is what are we going to do next year? The money's not guaranteed. And I mean, sitting in this role as a city councillor, if the money doesn't come through for special education audit, and we don't have the amount saved up that we need to, I cannot approve raising taxes to meet that demand. So the district is going to have to make some really big cuts next year if we don't get the money, just from my position. And just the only other thing I thought of, I substitute taught in the last few years in different districts. Personally, I don't think it would make sense to pay substitutes that aren't, that weren't already set up for working. That's just my one take out on that. Everything else I have addressed, and thanks for the information.
Thank you. City Administrator Barrett?
Just curious, with that study that was done 10 years ago, what was the actual outcome of that? What was implemented? Were those savings actually achieved, or what was the status of that report?
I'll start by answering the question, although I wasn't, obviously, I was not here 10 years ago. Wasn't here 10 months ago. But as we studied that, we would have loved to have seen some action taken. There was not. A lot's changed since then. Special ed law is something that evolves every single day. We all know that. Look back to 10 years ago, we would have loved to seen some of the recommendations implemented. The fact of the matter is, they just were not. We are able to look at that study and seek to implement some of that right now. And yet, still, if you think about where Lewiston Public Schools was 10 years ago, as opposed to where it is now, looks very, very different. The dynamic is quite different. And so, you know, with that being said, we've changed it completely intimately at all. And there was a leadership change that we recall 10 years ago as well between superintendents. It just seemed as though their, as we studied it very, very deeply, the recommendations were not followed. Our commitment would be to follow those recommendations, which would have significant financial impact in a positive way for us. We want to make sure that we are validated. We want to make sure that we've got the experts that would make these recommendations. And our commitment would be to implement those recommendations. Having checked the references of this particular company, they worked most recently with York Public Schools, who found significant savings. But both Chief Avery and I have checked their references, and we're quite confident that, obviously, by following the recommendations of this audit, that we would see significant savings of at least $1.5 million, if not more.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry, I was on mute.
Yep.
Yes, Ms. Roy?
I really did, I was having some audio issues, but I really was hoping that each councillor might be able to express. And if they did that already, I will go back and watch the recording. I apologize. But what it is that they feel about this to help us out, Mr. Jensen, I appreciate, and those who have shared, we're doing things that we wouldn't have normally done because of the situation right now. So I think, and I can understand the trepidation definitely, but I don't think that this is the way we would have approached it. It wasn't our initial approach. So I really would appreciate getting a sense from folks during this process. Normally, we've had feedback from city council before we even do our first full vote on our own budget. And we, I didn't have a lot of that direction thus far, and it's nobody's fault. There's a lot going on. But for us, it would be super helpful to know what your biggest concern is, and then any suggestions you might have. That would be super helpful for us.
All right, thank you. Counselor Pettingill?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Roy, or School Councilwoman Roy, for asking for everybody's feedback on this. Much, I, like myself, agree with Counselor Jensen in the fact that asking the taxpayers and the residents of the city to take on the burden of a tax increase right now is going to be a really large pill to swallow, you know, given the uncertain times that we're living in and that we have to navigate. As far as where cuts could be made, unfortunately, I don't have any guidance on that at the moment. You know, we do want to make sure that our teachers are paid because they're the ones that are going to be the boots on the ground, taking care of these kids and getting that instructional time done. You know, and it's the same thing on the city side. We're really going to have to see what we can cut. Because the fact of the matter is, when this is all done, people are going to have to get back to work. They're going to have to put their lives back together. We still have a city that we need to take care of, but the landscape is going to be much, much different. So both sides of this need to look and see what we can strap down and put off till next year, or whatever we can do to delay some of those costs. And I do want to point out that I really appreciate Superintendent Finn's voicing that both sides of this are in this together, and we're really trying to figure this out together at the same time. So it's much appreciated. Thank you. And thank you for everybody for all your hard work with living through all this and taking the time to put all this information together. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, you know, I'll reiterate basically what Counselor Pettingill said. You know, it's going to be my goal to have no increase in taxes on our community this year. So I think that's a good solid, a good solid recommendation. But I also want to acknowledge the hard work that's been done so far by the school department. And Superintendent Finn has definitely stepped up to the plate when asked in several areas, assisting the city. And I know Bobby, you've put a lot of hours in on this budget. So I just, you know, we have to acknowledge the hard work that's been done already. But, so that's my thoughts on any tax increase to the community this year with everything that's happening. Councilor Jolinas?
You know, I think what's unique about this is that, you know, Superintendent Finn presented cuts right out of the gate. So it's not like, you know, he presented a budget and then, you know, with his team, and then this happened, and then he had to re-present. It was almost like that was already done. So I think for me, hearing this, I mean, I get that there's more to be done. But for me, when I think about Plan B, you know, not wanting to raise taxes if this whole thing doesn't come through with the audit in special ed. But I also feel like we have enough institutional knowledge about what's going on with special education. We're not going to be blindsided. And I think, I understand that that audit was done all those years ago, but I still feel like we have enough data that's not going to, I mean, I understand that it's risky, and I get it. Councilor Jensen, I too don't want to get to a situation next year where I'm like, oh, my gosh. But I also feel like it's not going to be a blind side. Because of the data that we have, it won't be a blind side. So that's just, you know, my feedback.
Counselor Khalid?
That took me longer than I thought. Thank you. So I definitely agree with the rest of the city councillors that I would definitely feel uncomfortable raising taxes, especially with the current pandemic. And that being said, I hope that with the upcoming audit, and when will that audit be? When will the audit be done?
Counselor Khalid, we would like to have that done between May and June. And although it's a little trickier, you know, being out of session in terms of our buildings, really looking at the work that this auditing group could do, and the work that we've already learned how to do on Zoom. Bobby and I had a really deep discussion about that today. We're confident that we'll get the same result. Of course, documentation, passing papers and things to that effect will just be a little trickier, but we've gotten pretty good at this. And so we're pretty confident we'll get that, as Councilor Jolinas mentioned, we'll get that data back that will just justify what it is that we know we're going to have to do.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I hope that audit, you know, brings out savings so that we don't have to. When it comes to schools, we need to add more. We should not be cutting. But sometimes we do make, we do need to make difficult choices and, you know, cut some things, and I hope that's not the case. So I don't know anything about where to cut. I can't give you guidance on that because I'm here saying, we need more, we need more. And yeah, that's the only feedback I can give you.
Thank you, Ms. Avery. Did you have something else?
I just wanted to say that we're getting ready to do our financial audit electronically. So I think if we can do that financial audit electronically, we probably can do the special ed audit as well, and we're super excited about that.
Okay, Superintendent Finn?
I'd also just like to add that, if I'm hearing correctly, if the guidance really is that we want, we need to do our part to ensure that there is no increase to the taxpayers within this upcoming year. Well, I'll tell you what, we're ready to do this. And we've got a very smart school committee. I've got Bobby, I've got Karen, and quite frankly, that's what I need. And if that's the guidance that we're receiving, we're motivated and we'll make this happen.
And just know, you know, from what I'm hearing from other councils, that's going to be our goal as well. So we'll be doing that together. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to be the one to rain on the parade, but I'm hearing pretty much what I thought I would hear tonight. In conversations that I've had with the mayor and other councillors, I think austere is the word that keeps leaping out at me from the dictionary. I think we on the city side are faced with cutting, making some severe cuts. And I don't think we can say, I hope we can say that there's no personnel involved, but I'm not sure at this point we can. We are going to be looking at taking some things off the table that have, the city has prepared for, for some time. We certainly were not prepared for what has hit us now. And I think, I wished I had a crystal ball that would tell us when this thing is going to turn around. My own personal opinion is, the longer it takes for this to dissipate, it's going to increase exponentially the amount of time it takes to bounce back. What I'm saying, a month from now, if we're out of this, we might start to bounce back in a couple of months. If it takes six months or longer, it could take a year or more. I just think that's the way it's going to play out. The longer it takes, the more people are going to be permanently affected by what has happened. And I agree with what the mayor has got, said so far. I think the point of no tax increase this year is a starting point. That's my personal observation. We may have to go deeper than that. And I know that as we get into on the city side, there are going to be some items come up that are going to have to be the subject of a lot of deliberation and painful choices. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other councils have any other questions or comments? Councilor LaJoy?
Yes, I would just like to echo many of the conversations that have gone on this evening. And I think the important is, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, is trying to keep that tax rate down to zero. We've been cutting and trimming our budget for a number of years. And it's extremely painful for the department heads to try to operate in an efficient manner. And I know that that's a concern of the city manager. And I know that that's a concern of the city manager as well as the council and you, Mr. Mayor. So going into this is going to be very, very difficult this year. I am striving, as you are and others on the committee, for a zero increase on our tax base. I hope we can attain that without too much damage to our infrastructure. Because a strong infrastructure will attract businesses and individuals that will invest in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Barrett and then Counselor Ray.
Yeah, I know we'll get into our budget here in a little bit, but just to give you an idea of the scope of the difference between the two budgets. For the school department to get down to a zero tax increase, you're looking at roughly a two, two percent or a little bit less than a two percent cut on an eighty-three point four million initial operating budget. Looking at our side of the budget, we'll get into this a little bit more later. We are probably looking at having to cut something in the range of three and a half million dollars, which would be roughly a nine percent reduction in an operating budget of thirty-eight, thirty-nine million. So be aware that that's going to be very, very, very difficult and is going to require some difficult, hard decisions that I'm sure we'll get into going on. I just wanted to make that distinction because certainly the superintendent and Bobby should be complimented in the work they've done. But in some ways, it's easier for them, given the size of the budget and the fact that they could make a smaller percentage change than what we'll be looking at on our side.
Thank you. Ms. Counselor Ray.
Thank you. I apologize for not asking this question as part of my first round. But it took a while to open this file. City Administrator Barrett, in your memo to us, it says, the school department budget exceeds the state required share this year by over half a million dollars. Where is that number coming from when Ms. Avery just told us it's two hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
That number, I believe originally, and Heather can probably time, chime in here as well. That number came from basically looking at the, what was proposed in last year's budget, where you have a separate article in the budget that specifies how much the increase is, plus what we thought was at being added to it. And Heather, you want to explain that a little bit further because you probably know more of the technical details than I do.
I think part of the, and I just want to clarify, Counselor Ray, are you talking the FY twenty or the FY twenty-one above local share?
The school department's budget exceeds the state required share this year by five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Is in the city administrators' memo.
Right. And I think that stems from a presentation that Mr. Webster did. And I know Bobby and I have had several conversations recently on exactly where that name, number came from versus the number that's being presented at this juncture. And going into this year, the FY twenties budget, that was our impression of what the above required local share based upon Mr. Webster's presentations for the current year budget. Looking through that and reconciling it with Bobby, obviously, that is not the case. And it is still, and I'm trying to find the file real quick as I talk. It is still above the required local share. But the difference between the two fiscal years is flat. If that makes sense.
Okay. Um, and then to, I guess, Ms. Avery. So is it possible to have a zero percent increase and still meet the state required local minimum? It would be an increase over last year because of our increase in enrollment. So it's impossible to get all of state guaranteed money if we have a zero increase rate.
So when we talk, just so that I'm clear about what we're talking about. I'm talking about a zero increase on the mill rate. So if it's possible for the school department to get to a zero increase on the mill rate, it is. We can do, yes.
All right, thank you.
Without, without affecting state funding, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So if we, if we could, could we do a COVID nineteen update, starting with the superintendent? And then shift into, I believe, Dennis Dote? And then we're going to shift over to the city budget talks. So Superintendent Finn, is there any update?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So as everyone, I, I think is pretty well plugged in. I've heard from a lot of city councils and I appreciate input and feedback and guidance and encouragement we've had. We are well into our second of four phases. So we're halfway through phase two right now. In phase one, we made sure that we had our, our folks fed, that we took care of those, those physiological needs. Our buildings were cleaned from top to bottom and disinfected, ready for eventual return because we will return someday. And we also laid out some very basic fundamental ways for our students to be able to get engaged and allow their, their academic enrichment to take place. Phase two, we're still doing all we did in phase one. But in phase two, we made sure we handed out technology, laptops to just about every one of our learners. And that was very heavy lift, given the parameters that are in place around the very wise, stay healthy at home order that's, that's been, you know, put out there to us. So with laptops being put out, we made sure that we moved with equity in mind. As, as we said on several occasions, equity does not take a backseat because times get rough. In fact, it's a time for us to really find out what we're really made of. We have brought ingenuity into our, our curriculum, which essentially is a very similar approach that I took in my schools, my school in Atlanta. We had remarkable success with that. We talked about that in our last meeting. Right now, seven through twelve is up on ingenuity, as well as the other hundreds and hundreds of curriculum items that are put out there. Today, I'm sorry, yesterday and today, our elementary principals and a group of teachers were trained up on how to utilize something called PathBlazer. And that will really engage our K through six logins and passwords. As our, think about it, as our, our younger students don't normally have email, they, they wouldn't. Well, now they do and they'll have to. And so it's really forced us to, to get a good look at what we need to do to move our district into, really into the 21st century. And so as we are in phase two, we're actually planning for phase three, which will take us from the fourth of May through the eighth of June. Very happy to say that, that's already well in the works. Our LEA, our association, has been working very closely with our teaching and learning department. Karen Beckett headed that department up, supported by Bobby and I, so that we'll have some sustainable learning going on up until the eighth of June, when finally the school year, this bizarre school year does come to a close. A lot of the work that's happening also along those lines is getting some structure around what graduation will look like, what graduation requirements will look like. We've got some work to do with our school committee on Monday as part of our agenda, as to what credits look like, when we cut off grading, what we need to do to get kids caught up. And what we can actually do with some silver lining here, now that students have devices, how can we get students ahead during the summer if they so choose to get ahead? We can do that as well. So although, again, we, we want to be optimistic and we want to be positive about everything that we do. And that being said, we've learned a lot about ourselves as a district. We learned about things that we need to work on, but also things that we're pretty darn good at, too. We do love the guidance that we received from the Department of Education. In fact, today, there was a memorandum handed down that essentially almost echoed what our, our last frequently asked questions guidance was sent out from our department. It almost looked like it word for word. So we know that we're doing some great work, we're on the right track. And that we're going to continue every single day to make sure that our students are engaged, and gain the very best that they can get with equity in mind. We don't forget about that equity piece. So that's where we are right now.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, city councillors, school committee members. Just a couple of quick highlights and updates. Not much has changed from city operations. We continue from our last update. We still continue to deliver essential services as, as best we can through, through all this. Just again, some overall updates. You, I'm sure you've heard by now, the main primary elections are scheduled now for July fourteenth. Those have been moved out. The governor announced today that the civil emergency has been extended through May fifteenth at this point. Couple of quick updates on events that we had coming up. The first event, Trek Across Maine, has announced that they are going virtual this year, which impacts our downtown, Trek Downtown event put on by the Downtown Lewiston Association. It looks like that we will, we'll have an opportunity to host this for 2021, but 2020 has been canceled. Again, it's still doing a virtual event, just not having it come through Lewiston like before. And then again, along events, bicentennial parade has been moved to August fifteenth at this point, rescheduled to that date in hopes that we can pull it off at that point and, and things are back to somewhat normal. And I'll, I'll leave it at that. In this last piece is just an update. I'm going to ask Ed Barrett to give a quick update on homeless shelters. Been a lot of work going on among city staff. And I'd asked Ed, Ed has been sitting in and, and working, taking a lead on a lot of this. So I think he can provide a good update on those efforts.
I'll be happy to, but I noticed that Stephanie, I believe, had a question for the school superintendent. So maybe I'll let her get in here first.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Barrett. I just had a couple of quick questions. You know, in your initial presentation, Superintendent Finn, you spoke a lot about the high percentage of, of students that we have in special education, as well as our English language learners. And as you speak about the different phases that we're in and you, and you speak about, and I, I understand the equity point, I completely do. Can you speak a little bit about Lewiston Public Schools' plan to address children who carry IEPs?
Absolutely, it's a great question. So with, with the equity and with faith in mind, we're very, very careful. So the, the free and appropriate public education in mind, we're very careful to not jump out like a lot of other districts did and throw new learning out there when we knew that IEPs wouldn't exactly be met by doing that. That would be breaking the law in Lewiston. So I can just speak for Lewiston. And so we chose not to do that. In the meantime, what we did was we started shoring up what some of our services looked like, getting guidance from legal, but also from DOE around how we could very creatively make sure that we're serving those IEPs in terms of some of our services that come from the outside, how we can make sure that they can virtually still address our learners in need. And we had our special ed department come up with two different phases. So essentially, our holding pattern phase, which would be, okay, we can offer up enrichment opportunities, not new learning. Although there was a lot of pressure from the outside initially to do that, we wanted to make sure that we had our folks lined up, our plans in place, and make sure that our students, not only with IEPs, but also 504s, too. That's important as well. So we're very proud to say that our special department stepped up. They did what I needed them to do. And they're able to now offer those services as they're supposed to do as we move forward. We're also excited about the new learning opportunities for all of our students because the day will come where we got to realize that grades have got to be cut off at some time. And so we have a body of work that's been done up to about March thirteenth. We do know that a lot of our students weren't exactly where they needed to be. So allowing them some time to, to get some things caught up where it needed to be. And then we're going to work very closely with our school committee to now look at what it will look like as new learning does roll out there. But the very second that new learning begins, our commitment and our obligation legally is to make sure that those IEPs are being met and they're being met legitimately.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement, did you have something of the superintendent or?
I just wanted to voice my appreciation for what the superintendent, Chief Avery, and council committee chair Roy have done to date. I mean, the initial presentation, I thought, was well-prepared, well-presented. And then all of a sudden, this freight train came through and bowled us all over. I do appreciate what I'm hearing tonight. It's not going to be easy. You know, we've got approximately a hundred and fifty million dollar business here. And it's going to be tough for both of us. But I do appreciate hearing that you're up to the task and you're willing to work with us because it's something we need to do for the people that are out there hurting. Thank you again for, for your commitment and look forward to working with you. While it's not going to be fun, I'm sure, at least we will get through this part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett.
Okay, just to briefly update you on the shelter. We've been working with a large group of partners on this. The city's been working with CCI and Sean Yardley in particular. Both hospitals, main state housing, the Department of Health and Human Services, Tri-County, New Beginnings, Trinity Jubilee. We've even had people from Preble Street in Portland coming up and advising us. We have actually made some good progress. Most importantly, CCI has agreed to operate the facility. And they're now gearing up to try to recruit the staff that they're going to need to do that. And I understand from our conversation today that they think they have a lead on someone who would be the appropriate supervisor for the location. We have been working on a memorandum, memorandum of understanding between the city and CCI that would authorize them to use the armory for this purpose. The intention is that this would be a wellness shelter. And some of the reasons we're looking at this are first, that number one, at least one of our shelters in town has closed down due to the COVID epidemic. Some of the others have restricted, either closed to new applicants or have restricted their population to try to provide greater social distancing. And we think there are still social distancing issues in some of the others. We have also started to see, although it hasn't been a huge problem yet, a number of people who are potentially going to become homeless short term, largely because they may be living in temporary housing like, like a boarding house, where they don't have some of the same protections that you might have if you are renting an apartment under main state law. We're also concerned that this population could easily be a group that could spread the COVID virus throughout the community, given their close contact with other homeless people and the fact that they do tend to visit places that other people go to. One of the interesting things I've been finding out about this process is it's a lot more complicated to set up a shelter than I would have thought. Some of the issues are staffing, food, cots and bedding, cleaning the facility, personal protective equipment, laundry, security, and, and the list goes on and on. But I think that it is possible that we'll be in a position to actually start operations sometime this week, maybe toward the end of the week or the week after, depending on how quickly we can recruit staff because staffing is the big issue here. Basically, on all the shifts, you need probably three people to be available. So you're starting to talk about a pretty considerable size of, of folks. The other news that's important here is that main state housing will be paying for it. So this cost is not going to fall on the city. Main state housing has funding to assist, they're, they're assisting Portland in the shelter that they've established at the University of Southern Maine gym. And they'll be paying the cost of this one here. So I think we're making good progress. It was difficult to get to this point, but I think hopefully we're over the big hump and starting on our way down.
All right, thank you. Any questions from city council to either Mr. Barrett or Superintendent Finn? All right, so we'll switch our discussion.
I think Sophia had a question.
Okay.
Um, thank you. My, my question is, the, the three additional staff that will be at the armory, will, will the state of Maine fund that or will the city of Lewiston?
The, the state of Maine will fund all of the costs associated with the shelter and it's three people per shift. So you're basically talking somewhere, I think they're going to need somewhere in the range of maybe as many as thirty people to staff this, but the state will be paying the bill.
And, and those staff, is, are they coming from the city of Lewiston? Or who's, who, is it like new positions? Who's hiring them?
These are new positions that CCI will be hiring. So they'll be employees of CCI, not the city.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So we're going to shift our discussion over to the LCIP. So Ed, do you want to lead off on this or Heather?
Well, let me start by giving you just a brief introduction here, which is that obviously, anything we present tonight is our best guess. The degree of uncertainty that The degree of uncertainty that we're dealing with is significant, uh, particularly on the revenue side of the, of the city in that we're trying to make projections about what the impact of this economic situation are going to be, is going to be both on us and just as importantly on the state of Maine, because as the state of Maine suffers, its suffering will tend to come down to us as well through revenue sharing and other mechanisms of state support. So there's a lot of uncertainty. We don't know how long this, uh, situation is going to go on. We don't know how slow or quick the recovery is going to be. So what Heather and I tried to do is to say, what would give us some indication of what we might be looking at? And we thought the best indication might be, uh, the Great Recession from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twelve. That Great Recession was obviously different in that it affected the city more gradually over a number of years. So we looked at the total effect and basically what the effect was, was roughly around a thirteen percent reduction in city revenues over that period of time. So we started with that as, as kind of a benchmark, looking at our current revenue projections, applied that where it was appropriate, made some adjustments because not everything works the same way. And there are some differential impacts and came up with, uh, an estimate about the impact we, we were going to have on our, our revenues. There are lots of uncertainties here. Uh, clearly at the moment, we are not going to see a whole lot of direct assistance for operating from the federal government. There is some discussion about whether that's possible. So we don't know whether that's going to happen or not. There may be some positive impacts on the margins and some of the individual programs. The one area, and Todd will appreciate this, the one area, but apparently there is some operating support for is education. So I think the, uh, the federal act is providing some funding to states, uh, to help support education. They are not doing anything to help support much of anything else, except maybe a little bit on the transit side. Uh, we're still trying to dig into that. So we don't know if anything's going to come down the line to help us. We also don't know what kind of, uh, steps the state is going to take. You know, we will, we know we will get hit on revenue sharing as income taxes and sales taxes go down. And it'll be a pretty significant impact there alone. But as you'll recall, in, uh, in two thousand and seven to twelve, the state then further cut revenue sharing. So not only do we take the, the proportionate cut as revenues fell, our percentage of what was provided to the local municipalities was cut as well. So what you will be hearing tonight is kind of our best guess going forward. Uh, if I had to say what kind of margin of error is there in this, it could be quite a bit worse or it could possibly be better. And we won't know that for some time. We probably won't know that when we have to adopt our budget. But basically it has, uh, uh, sent out some stuff already. We're looking at roughly a let me find the number, roughly a one point six million dollar reduction in revenues. Um, at the same time, we're also looking at all the capital stuff that we were talking about and I, and, and trying to identify anything that possibly can be put off. Because we need to, uh, protect our fund balance for a couple of reasons. One is that if we are overly optimistic in this, believe it or not, we have to have something to fall back on. If we are overly pessimistic, uh, we can potentially during the fiscal year look at restoring some of the capital items and other things. So that's kind of a very general introduction here. Uh, in, in looking at the municipal community as a whole, nobody knows for sure what's going to happen. We're all making estimates. But we think this is a reasonable point for us to start. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Heather and let her go through some of the details that I think she wants to cover the capital stuff first tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. So, um, the first file that I sent out was, um, circulated probably around lunchtime that updated the capital items, the first being the amounts scheduled for fund balance. When we initially presented the budget, um, we were looking at three million, four thousand dollars and thirty nine cents, or thirty nine dollars coming out of the fund balance. Taking that from a thirteen percent coverage down to ten point eight nine percent. Um, the schedule that you were provided that had all the colors showing kind of who offered the, the deferment, um, ads initially were included that greenish color, um, the departments, uh, offered the purple and then I picked up some on the tan side. So of that original request of, um, a little over three million dollars, we are down to funding a million, five hundred and sixty eight thousand, sixty eight dollars, which allows our ending fund balance to have about eleven point nine four percent coverage. It gives us a good cushion, um, just shy of two, a little over two point seven million dollars above the ten percent threshold. The council tends to like to stick around. Um, that allows us some flexibility as the administrator had indicated to deal with any shortfalls in the revenue projections such as they are and or look at maybe even, um, voting to not follow the fund balance in this particular year due to the crisis and put some of that money towards operations. Um, and that would be one of the considerations, um, the council might want to deliberate on. So we reduced the fund balance ask with the assistance of everybody. And I, I appreciate all the help the department heads have given. Um, of a million, four hundred and thirty five thousand, nine seventy one. So that's kind of the first two sheets that were included in that file. We did do some work on the utilities. Um, there was about a hundred and nine thousand or so, um, reduction in stormwater. We are still looking at utilities further, um, just to see how we can impact on a favorable side on the rate increase that were initially, um, the rate increases that were initially proposed. The LCIP, which is the last sheet, and I think I've got this in the same order that I provided in the PDF, is you see the original LCIP and this focuses on the city and the school department. Because those two departments are what makes up the eighty percent rule, um, debt limitation rule. So going into the, um, budget deliberation, there were general fund and school department LCIP requests totaling ten million, nine hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. FY twenty one's budget limitation up for debt service or the eighty percent rule that we refer to was seven million, two hundred and seventy five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. So we were about three point six million dollars over that limitation. From there, we went through, um, and again, Bobby Avery and I had talked a couple of times looking at a combination of what the city could move towards fund balance funding as well as evaluating the current bond issues with completed projects. And they may not have surplus proceeds. So one of the, um, projects that the school committee and I'm not sure if the chief finance or officer has talked to the school committee about, but there was about two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars in surplus bond proceeds on the school side that they can use, um, however they see fit, but to pay down potential LCIP projects. Um, we have tentatively earmarked that as the Dingly Building Security, but you will see on the footnote that is subject to the school committee approval. On the city side, we are looking at having, um, nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars of surplus bond proceeds that we have earmarked for three projects. That includes the reconstruction of the FBO ramp at the airport that funds a portion of the Lewiston technology upgrades at three hundred and thirty thousand. And it also includes, um, the Canal Street parking garage repairs at two hundred thousand dollars. The municipal garage vehicle and equipment replacement for a million, two hundred and thirty one thousand, seven hundred dollars was initially earmarked for fund balance. So that got to be removed right out of the gate. And you will see on the first sheet that we talked about, um, that has been reduced from that one point two million dollars based upon priority listings. Since the pandemic, we went through and evaluated other projects and you will see we've deferred an additional four hundred and ninety thousand dollars worth of projects. They include the firefighting foam generator pickup for the airport. They defer the a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, um, earmarked for the citywide revaluation. That includes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a dark fiber upgrade. Um, I believe, um, that actually may have been done this year. We also have seventy five thousand dollars worth of street crosswalk, um, implementation improvements that we are deferring for seventy five thousand. And the Public Works Director has given me, uh, reduction in the Hudson Bus soccer field of a hundred thousand. So between all of those moving parts, right now as the LCIP stands, assuming that both the school, school committee and the city council approve using the surplus bond proceeds. The LCIP has been reduced to seven million, nine hundred and ninety six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So we are still seven hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and thirty seven dollars above the eighty percent rule. So those are projects that we may still need to evaluate and then that would be something that both the school committee and or the city council, um, may want to take one more pass at projects to decide if there are any further projects they wish to consider deferring.
All right. Thank you, Heather. A quick question, Heather, the, uh, we're, aren't we behind one year on fire station, the, the new construction projects?
Um, I think Mr. Barrett can speak to that a little bit. The bids just went out yesterday, but I think construction is at least, um, I, I don't know what the initial timetable, but I thought they were at least six months behind schedule.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we're, we're about a year behind schedule on that project and it's possible that with, uh, the bond funds that we have available now, depending upon some additional costs that still have to be recognized in terms of a clerk of the works and a, uh, commissioning study of the building once it's built. It's potential that we have sufficient funds available that we could at least, uh, have enough money to buy the land for our next fire station. That's going to depend a little bit on how the, oh, those, those other costs come in and whether some adjustments need to be made in the project or not.
So if we're, if we're behind a year, wouldn't it be appropriate for the council to consider just moving Main Street to the next, another year from now?
Yeah, that would, that's basically what I, I think at one point I had suggested that to Heather. I don't know if she, he did not include that yet, but that's certainly something that could be done.
Okay. And that, you know, that would be significant. And it's still keeping it on the table, keeping our plans of one station a year. Did you have something to add, Ed?
Yeah, remember that the only thing that we were talking about budgeting for the Main Street Fire Station in the coming year was pretty much land acquisition and maybe a portion of the design costs. So it wasn't the full three, four million dollars like we're looking at for the, um, Sabata Street Station, but it still was enough that we could probably defer that, uh, for a year, given that we will have, I think, enough money left from this year's, uh, Sabata Street Station to at least buy the land to get that locked up for the next station.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Khalid, do you have a question?
Not right now. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to lower your hand, okay?
Well, that was, sorry, that was, I forgot that I raised my hand a while ago. That was, um, before Ed start, started talking about, um, about the budget. I was wondering if, if we, if he can do, or even Heather, if they can do a screen share so that we can see what, um, exactly that they're looking at, but it's okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Counselor Jalinas?
I'm just trying to find that line item that you're referencing, Mayor. Is that, is, where, where is that, that amount?
It's, it's on the, it's on the LCIP listing.
Yep, got it.
And if you go down that list, uh, it's right below ladder one refurbishment. It's Main Street Fire Station Replacement for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's listed as being in the bond. You will notice that, that the note next to it was defer for one year. That was my suggestion.
Right. But what I thought, I heard you say, Mr. Barrett, was that it's, that's not really going to be the, the amount, but that amount is inflated. That the savings from looking at that line item wouldn't be that high. Is that correct?
No, no, my, my, my thought process was that Sabata Street Station is a year behind schedule at this point. And then, so I, I just thought we should move that to the next, to another year from now so that we stay on our projection of, you know, every year or so build a station. Ed shared that this, you know, so this was for land purchase originally, Ed, but you think we now might have enough?
Okay, it was, it was for a combination of land purchase and, uh, design for the second station because there's going to have to be some modifications to the design to match the site. As I said, we should know relatively soon, uh, how much we'll have left over from, uh, what we borrowed for the first station. The bids came in very, very good, quite a bit below what we anticipated. I'd actually, I was afraid we weren't going to have enough money. And it actually now looks like we should have some money left over, at least enough to acquire potentially the land for the next station.
Okay.
So that's pretty significant then, right? I mean, in that five hundred and fifty thousand out of the seven hundred and twenty that's been targeted, am I, am I interpreting this correctly?
Yes, yeah. No, that would be a good portion of it. And then I think there's a couple of major sidewalk projects that, uh, if we considered reducing that to just one of the sidewalk projects, I think that would put us in a position, uh, that we would at least stay at our eighty percent. Uh, Counselor Khalid?
Thank you. Um, can someone refresh my mind about the, um, the street maintenance program? Is that where the main department of, um, where like Maine has some sharing, the city has, um, funding?
It, there, there are a couple of different, uh, road programs. There are road programs that we do in conjunction with, um, the Andrews Coggin Traffic Resource Center that, that do have federal and state money involved in them. So for example, the Main Street project that Dale went over with you folks a couple of weeks ago is a federal state project that basically we are contributing ten percent toward. Um, most of the projects that are included in our LCIP, although not all of them, but most of them are local projects that are either a hundred percent ours or there's a program the state has, which is fifty fifty, uh, local and federal. So we are, you know, proposing at least three million in, um, street maintenance and reconstruction. I did send an email to Dale today and I know he's on the call asking him whether he has heard yet anything about what kind of road bids are coming in around the state. Our original anticipation was that we were going to see a significant increase in costs per mile because of labor costs on road projects. Uh, I don't know that Dale, Dale, have you seen anything yet that would give us an indication of how those might come in this year?
I haven't yet. Um, a couple of, TOT and a couple of them have been delayed, so I don't know that there's, um, some good data. It's kind of been a little bit all over the place. I think in the next few weeks we'll, we'll know some more. I'll do some querying tomorrow.
So it's possible that we may be able to adjust that line item without necessarily negatively impacting the amount of road work we want to do. Given the price of oil is now, so got down to twenty dollars a barrel for a bit today. And, uh, I'm not sure what the labor situation's going to be, given the, uh, number of people who've been losing their, uh, jobs and laid off.
Anything else, Counselor Khalid?
I'll come back another time.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one other project that I had kind of put my eye towards as we were embarking on this conversation was, um, the De Frame Plaza Concrete Surface. Um, and so I was just hoping, um, with Mr. Doughty on the call. Um, and so I was just hoping, um, with Mr. Doughty on the call, um, if he could speak to, if that is an appropriate project to maybe target if we're looking at reduction. Um, it's a quarter of a million dollars, um, and could really go a long way. So I just wanted to hear his thoughts, if that's okay right now.
As you, as you know, down there, the pavement is starting to, um, starting to heave and enroll a little bit. It is definitely a project that we could consider, um, deferring another year. It's been like that a while. Um, the biggest issue is really moving snow and ice from the facility because, um, it settles in a lot of the low spot. So, um, I don't think it'll cost us anymore to delay it another year, um, but there certainly will be a cost, uh, maintaining it in the winter and, and moving forward, so.
My thoughts on that were, um, so I have been trying to support our local businesses in that area and doing some curbside pickups and, um, folks are definitely using that space a lot less right now and I assume that will continue throughout the summer, especially with events like Truck Across Main, going to virtual and not hosting, um, that wonderful downtown event that we had last year. Um, not that it's not a priority, but I think as we think about this year versus next year and its use this summer versus next summer, um, just something that I was, I was considering, if that's helpful.
One quick, one quick comment here. If you look at the spreadsheet that, that Heather sent out, there are some notes on the right-hand side that say defer, push off for a year, combine, reduce. Those were comments that we had put there for your consideration. We didn't feel real comfortable making a whole lot of substantive changes in this list on our own, but we did want to point out some areas where it was possible to make those changes. So there are ways that we can make adjustments going forward to reduce the, uh, the amount we'll be borrowing next year.
Mr. Administrator, I'm not sure that's the version that they are, that was included in that package.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I gave him a clean version. As they all are looking at it like, what is he talking about? The only thing I might add, Councilor Ray, is on the DeFrain Plaza, we have had issues with, um, tripping hazards there from a liability standpoint. That would be my only concern about deferring that particular project a year, for a year. Um, it's something that the Public Works Director and I can look at to see if there's something we could do to Band-Aid some of that, um, to reduce the liability.
Yeah, I definitely can imagine, um, every time I walk through there, I have to be very careful, um, and I'm sure all folks have to be, but, um, yeah, just trying to think about what usage looks like. I guess also in my mind, something that's just hanging and I know you all know that I haven't really left my house since mid-March, um, but are folks using roads less or is maintenance going to look different on the roads as a result of that? Um, I know, of course, with the winters we have here, um, probably not, but, um, just some thoughts that are crossing my mind as we consider this all.
Strangely enough, their traffic is down a little bit, but oddly enough this year, um, especially around the posted road season, we're still have our roads posted, gonna look at them tomorrow, we're getting a lot of inquiries from, um, housing starts mostly, um, for heavy trucking on a lot of our roads. So although general traffic's down, it does appear that trucking related to construction is still blazing along pretty well. So that'll, that'll have an impact and that's actually a positive economic thing going on right now.
Very interesting. Thanks for answering those queries.
And I apologize, I apologize for confusing everybody by using my list instead of others.
Dale, while you're, uh, you're on there, so I suggested one of the sidewalk projects. Can you just give your thoughts on that and any major hot burn with, with that?
Which one did you suggest, Mayor? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
You know, I, I just saw that there are two major sidewalk projects, so, you know, I don't, I don't, that would be your call if we, if the council ever went in that direction.
Okay.
Dale, what he's referring to, um, is they're under the sidewalk maintenance and rehab, they're 352,000. There was one project slated for FY21 and that was Pierce Street, Ash to Birch. So that's just a one and done project. The other one was the Birch Karen and Jefferson Street. Up above there, the 350,000. So those are the two he's referring to.
Yeah, I knew which ones they were. I just wasn't sure if he had suggested one over the other. The one, um, the Birch Karen Jefferson, as it showed up in the LCIP, um, was intended to, um, backfill a gap. And that really starts, um, right there on, um, on Bartlett Street, continues up beyond the school, up beyond the Coliseum, and then, um, turns up at Walnut. Come to find out, we did some value engineering this year, we're actually able to, we believe we can complete that project with no additional LCIP additions. What the engineering staff was thinking of doing prior to all of this was actually jumping across Bartlett Street and head down towards the Route Sauer. Um, so what's actually written in the LCIP and what might occur are two different things. I think we were talking, um, the last couple of days internally, and if there were one, because this is beyond the original scope, um, we might defer that, allow, um, the existing project that starts, um, at, um, starts right at Bartlett and goes up beyond the school and up beyond the Coliseum and beyond the high school, allow that to happen with the existing funds. And if I were to defer one, I think that's the one, um, that I would defer, the Birch Karen and Jefferson, allow that project to get completed this summer and into the fall, and then pick that back up in the next LCIP. So I guess that would be my suggestion if you wanted, wanted to remove one.
All right, thank you. Uh, hold on one second, uh, Councilor Khalid. So I, I know we have, uh, the Chairwoman Roy, Bobby and Superintendent Finn on. I just, is there anything, I mean, we're talking LCIP and they have a few things on there, but I just, I wanted to allow them the opportunity to leave the meeting whenever they feel, uh, they're done. So I just want to throw that out there real quick. Thoughts on that?
I appreciate that. These are conversations we haven't had with the full board yet.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to speak out of turn, I guess, if you will, if that makes sense.
Yep.
If Todd or Bobby wants to say anything, that's definitely fine, but I, I want to wait to consult first.
Ms. Avery?
Yes, um, I asked Superintendent Finn if we could put this on Monday night's agenda. Um, so we're hoping that we'll have that discussion Monday evening.
Okay. So.
I said yes.
Okay. Uh, are there any other questions from councilors for Superintendent Finn, Ms. Avery or Chairwoman Roy? Ms. Ray?
Um, so Bobby, maybe you can refresh my memory. I'm sorry, I'm having some real lapses today and my internet's really slow. Um, when we spoke about the LCIP previously at the school committee meeting, we attempted to go for the plan that's being proposed by, um, the city finance director now where we deferred, um, the $250,000 for Dingwall Building Security to another source or to a future year, um, per your recommendation and to pass about 900,000 in LCIP. That was rejected and instead they asked for, or the body as a whole asked for the entire amount, 1.155 million to be funded. Is that correct?
Um, my recollection is, is that, um, it's close to being correct. Um, and it, and I could, I could be wrong, but I think that, um, we had spoken about the deferring the McMahon project.
Um, it just, just from my seat at that table, it seemed that the school committee was fairly adamant of keeping all projects in the LCIP moving forward. This predated, that vote predated the, um, pandemic hitting in full force, um, but there, that's just my recollection of that. So I think it will be interesting to hear if opinions have shifted on Monday, um, but...
You're not wrong about that, but you are right about the timing and definitely the conversations were different then.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, one last question on bonding and I mentioned this in my memo and I think I probably know what the answer is, but I thought I'd ask it anyway. You're looking at the school department's debt service schedule going out for the next few years. Um, we obviously have the high school, uh, expansion program that's coming up. That debt service will probably start hitting in fiscal year '22, um, and then '23, and I understand there's a break in '24. Has there been any thought about how to try to mitigate that couple of year bounce in debt service and level things off with the drop as other projects are paid off going forward from, from then, from I think '24, '25?
Ms. Avery, did you want to respond to that?
Um, I don't know how to respond to that. So the answer is, we have not had a discussion, Mr. Barrett. We have not had a discussion, um, at the board level on this, at this time, but we, we are looking at it. We'll look at that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Superintendent Finn, Ms. Avery or Chairwoman Roy? Councilor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would hope that after our meeting tonight, that the word would go back via the committee chair or the superintendent or chief Avery, uh, as to the conversation we've had here tonight. It sounds like they were adamant about their LCIP funding. I would hope they reconsider their stance on that and take a good, hard look at things, given the current consideration. I would hope that we wouldn't have to be the ones to suggest how much or where, uh, things are going to diminish. I would hope this would be a cooperative effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, just we want to acknowledge it has been so far and I suspect that it will continue and I, I'm looking forward to, uh, to hearing that. All right, if there's nothing else, uh, you know, you folks are all set to excuse yourself from this meeting and we really appreciate all of the hard work and appreciate you attending this meeting tonight. So there, so I, there are three things kind of on the table. Does any councilors want to weigh in on those or any other suggestions on the LCIP? Anyone?
Um, I have my hand.
Okay.
So, um, so going back to where we were, I see, I see that there are a lot of parking and garage developments. I'm wondering if, if those are tied to like, um, housing developments and like that needs to be, um, done. Can you, can Dale, can you speak on that? If there can be, if we can defer any of, um, any parking like Oxford, Linkin, all of them, or like one, maybe one versus two?
Let me, let me take that because it's, uh, I've got a little bit more background on that than Dale has. All of that parking is related to ongoing development that's taking place at the Bates Mill Complex, uh, not including Mill Five, but including the rest of the Mill Complex. Tom Platts is renovating a hundred some thousand square feet of mill. We have an agreement with Mr. Platts that requires us to provide so many parking spaces per thousand square feet of redeveloped mill. He has given us a parking demand, that parking demand was 425 spaces or something like that. We quite honestly are already behind in trying to fulfill that requirement because there's a very tight timeframe in the contract, but Tom has never really enforced that timeframe. So we are committed to, to doing those spaces and in fact, what's being proposed here won't even finish what we need to do. I think that there is some possibility that we can do, have some conversations with Tom to see in particular whether we can put off the costs associated with designing a new parking structure, uh, for a year, given the economy and given the likely impact of that economy on his, his number of people who are working in his complex. So we're committed to doing it, whether there's some flexibility on Thomas' part to put off part of it, uh, we'll have to wait and see.
Um, yes, thank you, Ed. I'm just wondering if maybe like talking to him and seeing if there's a flexibility or something and if he says no, then okay, just but, just, you know, having that conversation. Um, and lastly, I promise I'll stop talking. Um, it's about the entrance security upgrade. Is that for the, for the city building or building nine maybe?
Building nine, security upgrade?
Hmm. That is for the police department and any spillover was going to start working on the city hall.
Um, can, can that be deferred?
I know part of the security was with the Kalia accreditation. Ed, you must, you may know a little bit more than that.
Yeah, I do and Brian's, uh, out there listening too, so he can certainly speak up. Yes, the police department has a very leaky security system at the moment with a lot of keys that are out that we can't track and don't know, plus some doors and locks that don't work very well, so we really need to do something at the police department in particular. Brian, if you want to add anything, feel free.
They've actually already started the project, um, over at the police department. So I think what Heather talks about is it's going to start at the police department, which have already begun and then move over to city hall. So we've actually already begun that project about two, three weeks ago at the police department.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So is it, is it, is it fully funded now, Brian? Everything you needed, the police department, you have funded?
Well, they're still having to work with MIS because we're going to be doing a citywide badge system or ID system. Um, that part of the project has not begun yet, so that's what's needed to continue. They'll put in the hardware at the PD, but they still need to do the IT side of it.
All right, so, uh, I'll go back to, there are a few things on the table here. Do councilors have suggestions about those or, Councilor Patengill? Go ahead and, um, your, uh, your sounds blocked, Zach. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, the, the couple of areas that I would like to look at would definitely be the, um, the parking garages, you know, I do understand those are tied to Mr. Platts. Um, hopeful, given the circumstances, he'd be willing to work with us. Um, and then like you had pointed out, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, pushing off the, the Main Street Fire Station replacement, um, hopefully that, that'll give us a little bit of wiggle room to get down there. Uh, I'd, I'd hate to see us put off the, um, the sidewalk work as well as the DeFrain Plaza. Um, it, it'll put us a little behind in supporting the initiatives to, um, you know, be an age-friendly community or getting people out in, uh, in those alternative modes of transportation around the city. If we can reduce what we spend on, if, if those are the areas that we need to, if we can take a little bit out, um, it'll, it's not, not what I, what I'd like to see us focus on, um, so that's, that's my input.
Oh, thank you. Good points on that. Any other councilors, Councilor Jalinas?
So, so Heather, I'm trying to understand how much more we have to shave here. So I heard you say that in order for us to stay above the 80% rule, we had to shave 720, was it 720,000, is that what it was? Okay. And then, so then we did the whole, um, we looked at the, um, the main, the fire station thing that you talked about, Mr. Mayor, and then we looked at the, the sidewalk rehab thing and, and Mr. Doughty spoke to that. So if I look at those line items, how much more do we still need to shave? I'm just trying to get a handle on that.
So if you look, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, Heather.
It's okay. Um, if we're looking at this and the way, I just want to clarify something with the Public Works Director in, in relation to what Councilor Patengill said. The, um, Birch Karen and Jefferson Street, the initial plan as it was written in the LCIP is going to be completed. Is that correct, Dale?
It is our belief that we can complete it with the existing
It is our belief that we can complete it with the existing funds without the LCIP.
Okay, so the 350,000 would be to do an additional scope of that project beyond what was initially outlined?
I will verify tomorrow, but that is our belief, right, at this moment, yes.
Okay, so Counselor Jalinas, to your point, if we move the Main Street Fire Station to the deferred column and that 350,000 for Birch, Karen, and Jefferson, we are actually now just shy of $180,000 under the 80% rule.
Keep, keep it in mind, one counselor suggested that we find areas other than sidewalks because of, you know, kind of a direction councils have had in the past. So just want to reiterate Counselor Pettingill's thoughts. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would go along with moving out the Main Street Fire Station. I mean, that we're almost there in effect now anyway because of the situation with Sabata Street. I'm looking at, at various items here in the deferred column. Am I to assume, Heather, that these are already taken to be deferred, such as the foam generator and that sort of thing?
The projects that were initially listed in the deferred column have been brought before you based upon administration, department head, and agency recommendations.
Okay, so we add to that roughly 550 for Main Street Fire Station, and if we do the Birch, Karen, Jefferson sidewalk rehab, potentially I see some other areas there, and I would look to the Public Works Director to see if there's anything we can shave or defer out of his equipment request that would further our goal here.
Just to clarify, Counselor, the equipment request is 100% funded through fund balance. It doesn't get funded through the bond issue. However, if you will notice, notice on the first sheet, the Public Works Department has deferred 536,700 dollars worth of equipment. He essentially has cut the last nine items off that list, the LCIP listing. So that's, that enabled us to reduce the fund balance requirement.
Okay, apparently I'm just having trouble seeing the forest for the trees here, so.
I, it's, it's very difficult in this kind of presentation format.
Well, I understand. I, I don't have the same smoke and mirrors apparently, so. It just, it just does not read that well. Okay, I know, I, I just look at these big ticket items and see if there's some way we can piecemeal something together that, you know, this is, it's going to be a cobble job, no matter what we do, and every, every little bit counts. Thank you.
So Counselor Khalid, and then Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say in support of Counselor Pengill, I don't want to see sidewalks being deferred or taken from, or cut, because I know that a lot of these areas, a lot of these sidewalks are highly, you know, used, and especially by youth, so I hope we can look at other areas.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Thank you. So my areas of priority for, it sounds like we're sending Dale off to do a lot of work, so thanks Dale and your team. My priority order would be to defer Main Street Fire Station replacement project, given the factors that were discussed before, not because it's not a priority, but because we're already behind, so why put the money in there? And then looking at the parking garages and lots, and trying to see if there's any leniency with the developer on those, so that we could defer some of that cost. I would put sidewalks at the bottom, like some of my colleagues just talked about, and then if Duprein Plaza has an alternate solution, that could be a patch for one year, that would cost less than what is proposed in the LCIP. I think that would be reasonable, given that that plaza will not be used in the same way this summer as it has in the past, is my reasoning for that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jalinas?
I think there was another counselor before me, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Counselor Khalid, your hand, is your, now?
So the reason, it's not that I'm anti-sidewalk, I mean, especially because that's my ward. I, I guess what I heard Mr. Dowdy saying was that they had some funds, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Dowdy, but I think the reason why I'm kind of supporting that cut is because I heard you say that you have some funds still available, and you're actually working on that stretch. Is that correct?
Yeah, we have funds available to complete the project as it was described in the LCIP. If these funds had been secured, we would have hopped over, over Bartlett Street and headed down towards the root cellar to extend this project. But we believe we can complete what was described with the funds that exist today.
Right, because the LCI, this document outlines, you know, Birch, Karen, Jefferson, sort of up by the Coliseum, right?
Exactly.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was understanding that before I.
You cut out and retained some other things to try to reduce the cost, so I think we're able to do it with the funds that are allocated.
Thank you for that clarification.
So Counselor Pettingill?
Uh, so I, I guess kind of just a clarifying question on that particular project. Will that, does it have the potential to be used by students that are kind of leaving the Marcoth Park area as they're either walking to school or, or from school? As, if it's already in there, and we're already looking at this, I, I want to make sure that students have a safe way to, to access the, the school or, or leave the school. I know we're talking about that it's already, already funded and whatnot, but again, I want to make sure that anybody that's walking on our streets has a safe way to do so.
Dale?
Could, could I suggest that we come back with a map, and I could, I can better describe this and actually provide it to you on a map? It's, it's hard here without having a visual, so Thursday I could provide you that map, what's described today, and what we would do if this, if these funds were secured. Would that be helpful?
Yes. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mostly to echo my colleagues' thoughts, I would absolutely agree with delaying the Main Street Fire Station project by a year. Makes a lot of sense to me. I've been really in support of the Birch, Karen, Jefferson sidewalk repairs for a while now, being my ward and pretty close to where I live too, and being on the school board. As, as Counselor Pettingill said, it's a route a lot of, a lot of students will take in the afternoon. So it's really important to do that, and plus, thinking image-wise of the city, if someone from out of town's coming to the Coliseum, they'll probably get off the highway, probably get off by the Ramada, go down Pleasant Street, go down Bartlett Street, they'll take a right at Birch, go to the Coliseum there. So as nice as we can make that route look, the better it's going to be for our city's image. So I, I really don't think that, yeah, I really wouldn't prefer deferring that, but if we had to defer any further work up to like the root cellar, I mean, it's not the nicest right there, I would like to see that part done, but I mean, if it means saving money, then I'm okay with just finishing the initial project.
Thank you. Thank you. So, you know, I want to make one thing really clear, that it appears to me that everybody on the council is supportive of the fire stations being, you know, continuing that path moving forward for the fire stations, which I think is really important for us to acknowledge. But again, for a couple of reasons. One, we believe there's going to be funding to possibly move forward with the design, but if not, everything's been kind of moved one year along, so that's the reasoning why I think we're, we're considering this. Ed and Heather, with that, with that acknowledgement on, on the Main Street Fire Station, and you've heard enough thoughts, I think, from councilors, can you go from there with the recommendations for Thursday on the remaining to, to meet that 80% mark?
Uh, yes, we can definitely talk about it and get down to an amount that would be under the 8% limit.
Okay, is the council okay with that? Seeing thumbs up? Go ahead, Ed.
One caveat is the school department, $600,000 for, for the parking lot at McMahon School. If they decide not to do that, that would be some additional funds. I would, I mean, anything we can put off in terms of borrowing, I'd be supportive of, as long as it's not something that, that's going to hurt us short-term.
Okay.
And I know Mike, Mike LaJoy might have some feelings about that project because he's been so involved with the folks over by the school.
Okay. So as for tonight, have we covered everything that I think, because you already did the revenue presentation?
Um, just, just real briefly, you might take a look also at the fund balance reductions that detail. I know there's a lot of individual reductions in there, and see if you have any specific questions about any of them and their impact, and if you'd let, let Heather know, so we be prepared to address those. Thursday, obviously, you know, we've, we have covered the revenues, you can take a look at that, that Heather sent that out, and I think I tried to give you a little bit of an idea of how we came up with those estimates. I will just repeat that if you want to get to a zero tax increase on the city side, you're talking about a 9% reduction in our operating budget. Our operating budgets have been scoured pretty tight over the years. I know Heather's going to find some money to make some additional reductions, but it's not going to be anywhere near what we need, so there's not many places to go, other than taking a look at, at personnel, vacant positions, and things like that, so. Heather?
Yes, I agree with everything you just said.
Okay.
And I didn't mean, I didn't, I wasn't trying to pick on the schools, but I just wanted to give you a feeling for the proportional difference between what we're looking at on our side and what they're looking on their side.
And so that.
On their side, they're not looking at any revenue reduction. Hopefully that's going to become true, but certainly we don't know that for a fact. It's always possible. It's unlikely that, that the state would go back and cut GPA, but it is a possibility. On our side, we're dealing not only with expenditure increases that we have built into our budget, but we're also dealing with looking at a very significant revenue reduction that compounds our side of the budget and makes our problem about four times bigger proportionately than the school problem.
So I wonder, with that in mind, can you have another discussion with Todd and see if there's some, you know, I guess have that discussion with Todd, because they might be able to try to absorb more of that percentage?
We can certainly have that, have a discussion with him and see. I don't know what the reaction would be, but we can ask.
Right.
Heather? Heather?
Yes?
Your little, you, you look like you turned your speaker on, so I thought you were going to say something.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, Counsel, Counselor LaJoy, I, so Dennis shared with me, you had your hand up, and I missed it, and then we'll go to Counselor Jalinas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was just a comment that Ed made about the, the $600,000 on the city side, and I agree with you, Ed. I'd like to fight strongly to keep that going, however, if that's the only means to an end with regards as to where we want to get, I suppose that'd have to fall somewhat, and I'll take care of the residents on, on that temple and their concerns as to the danger that the current situation is posing. That's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counselor Jalinas?
Well, I just had a couple of quick things. So I, first of all, thank you, Ed, for like pointing out that the whole percentage difference between city budget, school budget, that was huge for me, really important, I needed to hear that. The other thing is like, I, I feel like, so as a business owner, I would look at different things, right? If I had to, if my board said, you know, go back and cut, and I would look at salaries, and I'd look at COLAs and that sort of thing, but I feel like we can't really look at that unless I'm understanding this right, because those are all protected, I mean, jump in, Dennis, but everything you've told me is like, you know, because I remember coming to him, being like, what is all this about? When I was just trying to understand the whole, the whole land of, you know, union stuff, and I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out here is, I know that there's been some freezes with positions, but it's my understanding we can't touch any of that other stuff, is that correct?
In terms of COLAs that are outlined in current collective bargaining agreements, you're correct. If they are, if they're already established, then we would not be able to make any reductions in that regard.
Just, just to clarify, we, we could always go back and ask, but there is no guarantee that the unions would agree. When we had the, the big cuts, we cut 25 some positions in 2010, 2011, we did go back to the unions, some of them indicated a willingness to give us some concessions of one form or another. One of them did not, and since that one was unwilling to do it, we felt it was unfair to try to take, take it from the other folks, would have just created more problems going forward. So I think it's very unlikely that we would find people willing to give concessions, but I don't know that the depth of the problem has sunk into people yet in terms of our employees, because, you know, even though they're certainly seeing what's going on, they're not personally being dramatically affected as, as of yet, so I don't know that they would grasp the, the extent of it and be willing to give up something at this point, maybe down the road as things get clearer and the pain becomes more, you know, if you start seeing 30, 40% unemployment, that might get your attention. So we'll just have to wait and see, but I think it would be very difficult. It didn't work last time, I think it would be very hard to have it work again this time.
And understood, I mean, I want to take care of our people for sure, but as, you know, Heather charges us with like going back and really looking at that budget, and looking at every little corner that we can, I'm just trying to figure out like what's off the table and what's potentially, you know, up for review, so I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Good points, thank you. Counselor Ray?
Just one other point to raise as we're talking about, you know, school and city side, there's also the county, which was established in the fall through the county budget process, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Barrett, but that comes in at four cents already as a base, so is there any consideration that that would be assessed differently, or it, we're working with that four cents, no matter what?
I, I think we're probably working with that four cents, no matter what. I can't imagine that the county, I don't even know if they could legally change that at this point.
I don't think so.
Because they're all, they're already, you know, almost what, their budget goes into effect January 1st, so they've been operating under that budget for some period of time already.
It did sound like they might not bond through this county, which is, was going to be new anyways, but.
I, I certainly can check with Larry Post and see if there's any flexibility there. I would ask you not to ask us or the school department to make up that four cents, that really irritates people, where we're making up a, a tax increase that's being forced on us by another level of government, because it just doesn't sit well with folks.
I would definitely agree with that, just wanted to make that well-known, even if we all get to zero, there's still an impact.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Being the consummate professional that Ed is, I'm sure when he talks to the school department, he, I mean, I wouldn't want to play poker with this guy at all, but I, I'm sure he'll find a way of finessing the conversation around the part as to what we would have to do on this side of the budget to come up with a zero increase in the mill rate versus what they, they could possibly help us out with. I mean, we're talking people here, is the way I, what I hear anyway. I mean, that's basically where the big dollars are, and I would hate to see it happen, but given what we are in right now, I don't think we can take it off the table for sure, but I, I'm sure that Ed will be able to finesse his way around that in the conversation, and I liken him to the Godfather, you know, make him a deal they can't refuse, so.
I, I wish I had something to offer, that would, would be not, not refusable.
I think they have some things to offer. I mean, I, I go back as a member of the Finance Committee in talking with. I mean, I I go back as a member of the Finance Committee in talking with them about some of their LCIP things and uh getting a handle on how they arrived at that. I'm, I mean, everybody has a little bit different uh bent on how they do their budgets. And I I'd like to think that they're they're going to be able to to help us out. I know that we're going to have to dig deep and what we do is probably going to hurt. But they can they can help uh kind of spread that hurt perhaps. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I see lots of department heads there. Does anyone have anything they want to add? Okay, uh, counselors, anything else? Okay, so Ms. Ray?
Alicia?
Sorry, just wondering, um, will the meeting on Thursday also be a workshop starting at six?
So I was just gonna move to kind of confirm with counselors that they're all okay with a Thursday meeting at six? Okay, that looks good. All right, uh, last call. Anything else anyone want to add? Thank you very much. Good meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, Zach, that's quite a bow tie.
Is it a clip-on, Zach?
Uh, no, that that is not a a clip-on. Thank you.
Glad glad Chantel was able to help you.
Bye, everybody.
Uh, it's 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 not that, it's not that good.
Okay, thank you, everybody.